Good evening, let's call beating the order and stand in the play. By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Counselor Jones, Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelli.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Announcements, do any counselors have announcements to make? Tonight? And we will move into the first media item on our agenda, and that's a public hearing. Public hearing to consider the proposed assessment for the construction of Uggstead and Arrowhead Road reconditioning, SP two oh two dash one oh one dash zero one four, Minnesota project number STBG six nine two two one nine eight, district number five thirty four. And we will start with Mr. Mulder, with an explanation of the project.
Yeah, so I thought I would just um kind of do a quick overview and basically I'm using some slides back from this in the project, a long time in coming, um but this project started back in um twenty nineteen, uh shoot, excuse me, twenty twenty, and we held our first public hearing meeting on January twentieth, twenty twenty one. And it was at that meeting that um we shared the capability study um that engineers had prepared for this project. Um we shared that a public information meeting um with the residents um that were going to be impacted. Look at the next slide, Joe. Um so this is just kind of this, we 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 jokingly refer to this as the roadmap to the road. Um but this is the process, and again, we circled that that date, January twentieth twenty one was the first time we met with the public about this project. The rest of those dates all got thrown off because of um as we go through the process to um have the plans prepared, scheduled was the state aid projects and federal aid projects. We needed the state to sign up on the road project, and that took um a fair amount of twenty twenty one. So we um actually didn't um award this, so the design was in the fifth in twenty twenty one, in twenty twenty two, we waited for final approval. Um didn't get that until um late in the year, so we actually awarded this debt on January seventeenth of this year. So then um we started in the spring, um and now we're in the October of twenty two, public hearing on the assessments were in October of twenty three. Um so yeah, just a brief overview of what we've had proposed to do is um we've had seven different segments. Um we were gonna mill and overlay a number of those reclaim and overlay um and do some full depth reconstruction. Originally, back in um two years ago, we were thinking it would be a ten foot wide multi-use trail, but that actually got changed and was only a six foot wide trail. So we did add some um turn lanes, um and a center left turn lane um around the intersections um with Arrowhead and with Hawk Circle. Um so those are the thought um improvements that have been made. Back, we had that public information meeting, we shared the moving engineering costs on the next slide. At that point in time, we said um we anticipated that the construction was going to be two point eight million. We had money for design, wetlands, geotech, we go for the contingency with total project cost of three point six million. Um we also identified how we were gonna fund this project. Um we included um some federal funding, some state funding, which was the max that we could get for these two projects. Um we're putting a hundred and fifty thousand um from local funds in various um stormwater, um general, everything, things like that. And then we have proposed uh an assessment of ninety seven fifty, the time we pumped at seventy five parcels that can be assessed. I think we're down now to seventy three. Um at that point in time, assessments were scheduled to cover twenty percent of the actual total cost of the road project. In the delay, um as we went through this, construction cost increased by a nine point three million, so um the road project now ended up being, you know, uh the construction was um right about uh four million dollars, um the project in about four million dollars, which is on construction first. So despite the fact that we had an increase in cost, this was the um assessment that we told people back in twenty twenty one um that they had that spread over fifteen years, four percent, and did not change the interest rate, despite the fact that interest rates that from the money that we've been borrowing has increased um to an annual um payment of eighty seven six dollars in many respects. Um so we have gone through that process, um the road project is substantially completed, there are a few punchless items that need to be repaired yet. Um but um so tonight, we're at the public theory. Um this is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the assessment and on the project. Um if members of the public do object, we will schedule individual objection hearings. Um we're just scheduled to do that on October thirtieth. Um we will do individual times each um projecting party. Um at that point in time, we'll hear your objections and your fault, and the council will um give some indication of how we want to handle those objections. The plan then is to have the final assessment law concluded city council on November sixth. Um you know, taking into consideration all the comments of the public hearing, all the especially the objection hearing, we will make the final decision.
Thank you, uh we will accept public input from anyone present on this project. Uh the current public input section is only for the public hearing for this project. If you're here for other business, there is another time for public hearing or for public input. If it's an agenda item later on in the meeting, there should be a time available then. If it's general public input, there will be public input shortly after this meeting. Also, we have seven listed objections right now for the assessment. Uh if anyone else other than these seven people stand up and object tonight, they will also be scheduled for a an one-on-one uh hearing on the thirtieth. Also, will
Submit a written.
They have to submit a written?
And I have a form for that as well.
Okay, there's a form available from the city clerk. Also, just to point out, the assessment of ninety seven fifty is a standard number that we have used for the last, I want to say, four or five years on all city road projects. So this is not a number that's specific to this project. It's a city policy number that goes across all projects. And in some projects, it's paid, the assessments have paid as high as twenty-two percent of the total project cost. Uh this one is significantly lower, especially due to the increased costs. If you filed an objection written, you do not have to speak tonight. But I, you can, but you don't have to. Now, I'd like to open it up to whoever wants to speak to us. If you're in chambers, please approach the podium and state your name and address. If you're online, start with your name and address. Uh is there anyone in chambers that wishes to approach the council or speak to the council? If so, come to the podium and start with your name and address.
Hello, my name is Mark Frick. I live at uh four two four one Uggstead Road. So um I'm coming here to object to this. Uh you know, I was appor- we we were all informed, I guess, of our uh ninety seven fifty assessment, and I guess I would assume that you guys are all aware that these assessments are governed by the Minnesota statute, chapter four twenty-nine, uh which says special assessments cannot exceed the amount by which the property benefits from the improvement, the amount of property benefits from an improvement called a the special benefit is measured by the increase in the market value of the land due to the improvement. The assessment must be uniformly applied to the same class of property. A local improvement may benefit properties that are not abutting the improvement, and those properties may also be assessed. So it's my contention that I don't see a tangible increase in the value of my property to the tune of ten thousand dollars before the product, uh before this project was completed. I had a paved street in front of my home, Uggstead Road, and a paved sidewalk across the street from my home, the east side of Uggstead, yeah, Uggstead. After the project, I have a paved street in front of my home, Uggstead Road, and a paved sidewalk across the street from my home. Uh I don't see any rationale for an increase in my property value based on the improvements. I made some comments in here, there was no tangible marketed uh marketable benefit to my property. Um the city didn't redo my kitchen or add a bedroom or bathroom that I couldn't, you know, definitely see an improvement. Uh I can't list my home and say, I got a nice improved road in front of my house, that's not a thing. Uh maybe if it was a gravel or dirt road, that would, you know, possibly be a benefit. I would say, you know, others will comment here. I also have no documentation of such an increase to my property value. Kind of jokingly say, the only benefit is I've got an increase in speeders thanks to the nice smooth road, so. Um and as I've got a lot of attachments that I had emailed in, so I assume that uh those will be shared. There's previously been ruled on by the Minnesota Supreme Court on August twenty-four, two thousand sixteen, that assessed that they uh that I believe is applicable here. Assessments amount to non-uniform taxes. So you guys are applying non-uniform tax to us in in form of these assessments. They're not fees that are being assessed by this council. The, well, I've got multiple examples in here from the Star Tribune and other uh other media outlets that talk about these same type of things being struck down multiple times in St. Paul and other municipalities. I furthermore contend that the improvements to Uggstead benefit the community as a whole, not just the seventy-some people you mentioned. Um there, you know, when you look at where I'm located, and I'm about half a block away from the Y um and a a sentia complex, and therefore about a block away from the schools, those enormous community centers draw a lot of um traffic in the morning and in the afternoon and throughout the day for the Y. Be also beyond those two um huge areas of traffic generation, we've got we've got other projects that have that have damaged our road and and sped up the necessitation of the replacement here. The roundabout uh construction at Midway Road and Maple Grove had a lot of, a lot of construction traffic, you know, barreling down Uggstead. The building of the Aerie, I don't know how you pronounce that, apartment complex is another thing that's increased a lot of traffic and construction traffic. The re- the rework of Highway fifty-three at uh Highway one ninety-four and other projects where you have a lot of traffic that comes down the vague bypass across fifty-three and straight through Uggstead down to Maple Grove and beyond. Um I would contend that a lot of damage done to Uggstead Road was from this high volume of large construction equipment like eighteen wheeler dump trucks and et cetera versus the lighter local traffic of the local residents that you're assessing. Um and and you know, I I don't know that you've mentioned anything, I don't know if this is public information, but why isn't Ascencia or the Y playing, paying an unfair burden of this? Um they somehow were able to come up with a billion dollars for a nice new hospital, so maybe they can help foot the bill for this. And um I guess that's kind of my last point, I feel like this should really come from more of the general city taxes and not just be applied to us seventy citizens. And and I reference that they undermine all of the attachments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't be answering individual points of challenge this evening. We will be listening and taking them in. The the time for us to go over those will be during the hearings on the thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
We will try to answer procedural questions and and broad questions that come up as they come up.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Who would like to be next? And although we're gonna enforce it loosely, there should be a three-minute limit on the.
Got it. I'll do my best. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, my name is Kimberly Hansen. I live at four one seven three Uggstead Road in the greenhouse, as it seems like most of Herman Town knows us. Um I'm just going to read the letter that I will be submitting this evening on behalf of myself and my husband and the rest of the residents on Uggstead Road. Um so please accept this letter as an official complaint regarding the City of Herman Town's road construction project assessment for Uggstead Road. I am writing as a concerned citizen of Herman Town to state that the proposed amount for each land parcel of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is an unacceptable amount of financial burden to put on taxpaying residents in the city who on a taxpaying resident in the city who is already paying an estimated seven thousand dollars in property taxes on an annual basis. Currently, the portion of Uggstead Road that goes from Maple Grove to US Highway fifty-three is occupied not only by residents and homes, but is also accessed by a majority of families that utilize the public schools, the hockey arena, the YMCA at the Essential Health Wellness Center. This includes not only residents of the area, but also guests to our opponents at any hockey, football, tennis, volleyball, basket of basketball events and others. In my calculations, the amount of the parcels that are on Uggstead in the above-mentioned space is sixty-eight parcels, which was corrected tonight to about seventy. These appear to be the only residents responsible for the estimated assessment of six hundred and sixty-three thousand. In addition to these parcels, there are also three residential areas that are required to utilize this portion of Uggstead Road to access their residents. I ask why those estimated eighty-six additional parcels have not been asked to contribute. There is also a hundred and forty-seven unit apartment complex that utilizes this portion of Uggstead Road to access their apartments. So I ask again, why have they not been asked to contribute it to this es- assessment amount? If all of Jackson Estates, the homes off of the Twin Pines Road, and the residents at Aerie contributed to this assessment, this would drive the individual cost of this project down to about a fifth of the current proposal per parcel. I also ask why the school and YMCA are not being asked to contribute. Jackson Estates, the YMCA, and soon the school have all contributed to the increased amount of heavy equipment traffic on Uggstead that has led to or will be leading to increased damage to on the road. While these projects have improved Herman Town, the cost of them should not fall to only the sixty-eight parcels on this road. I am thankful for the new road, but I am not supportive of this initiative falling on only sixty-eight parcels when this is a major road for many in Herman Town. I ask that you please reconsider the population that would be required to cover the proposed six hundred and sixty-three thousand to share the cost with those that use it most. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Lisa Volk, uh forty-three twenty-eight Uggstead Road. Um I'd like to echo the sentiments of the previous two residents that spoke. Um there's much many more residents that also use this this roadway. Um and I also have a few other issues like the other gentleman um that weren't addressed during the construction project, such as culvert replacement of some um a culvert that is has col- had some collapsed areas in it um that I brought to the city's attention in the spring of twenty twenty-two, and they had informed me at that point that it would be replaced when the road was scheduled to be replaced. However, to my disappointment, that did not happen. Um and I foresee that being an issue again in the the spring. Um so I I would like to voice that concern um as well as um the fact that, you know, like the other gentleman said, there's no sidewalks on the on the other side of the road where there's several kids that are trying to get to school, and they now have a narrower path to do so. Um they have to walk down the side of the street where that straight lane is going forty-five miles an hour plus to get to the crosswalk, um which is causing them to cross four times instead of just once um in a in a kind of unsafe um setting. So I just wanted to voice a couple of concerns there, as well as I feel the amount is um you know, not not is more than enough um for us to have to pay for just those res- residents on the Uggstead Road there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Amber Olson, I live at four three two four Uggstead Road. I submitted my letter earlier because I get really nervous, and I am just hopeful that you'll reassess what's coming our way and listen or like read closely to the letter. I do understand that there was a need for a new road because I live directly across from the school right in the middle of the turn lane, and my biggest concerns are my kids and myself's safety. Them trying to cross the street to school, they in the past have had to go through two lanes of traffic, and now they have to cross three or go on the side of the roads down to the crosswalks um that are not close to my house and on the shoulders when there's chaotic drivers and um distracted kid drivers and parents. So please just read my letter, and I look forward to the meeting sure soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council at the public hearing this evening? Is there anyone online that wishes to speak, or do you have any hands raised, Joe? If anyone online would like to speak, just simply start with your name and address. Is there anyone either in chambers or online that wishes to speak to the council during this public hearing about the subject of the Uggstead Road reconstruction assessment? We will now close the public hearing and move on to other business on the agenda. Yes. And will you, Joe will have forms out in the hall within about a minute.
And they're given a time on the thirtieth?
Yes, um we will look at how many people we have, um we will start at five o'clock, we'll look at how many people we have, we'll schedule specific times, we will notify the individuals of public specific times. So that way they don't have to sit around. You know, with seven people and ten minutes each, it's like, well, I don't sit around an hour, I can show up at six ten and be present, you know. So we'll we'll notify them.
You'll you'll be notified by mail.
Yeah, it has to be ten days in advance, certified mail.
Were you done with everything we need for the public hearing other than accepting the two objection letters? We will move on to communications, we have nothing specifically listed. Mr. Mulder, we had three presentations at pre-agenda, could you give us a short synopsis of those presentations?
The finance department presented the quarterly financial reports, just to give a status report of where we're at for the budget, and they also shared the new budget module um the twenty twenty-four budget, and we'll get that one up to you, uh we'll take a look at. Um we'll get that one out to you, but understand some of that content is still being prepared, so it might change um from today until November twenty. The plan is to have all of that content done by November twenty. And it's fine, you can look at it, just be aware of that. Um I gave an update on Herman Town Arena design, um schematic design. Um seeing the floor plans, we're expecting estimates of that designs here within the next week or so. Um David Volk, he even updated on Herman Town Road Bridge uh and road projects that are scheduled for twenty twenty-four. Um and then also just a brief update on the steam sweep trail uh project that is also scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, um public discussion, this is the time that individuals can address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. We do have several items on the agenda, and I'm sure there's at least one or two that people will want to comment on. Uh but if it's something not on the agenda and general public input, please approach the podium and start with your name and address.
My name's Jerry Terrar. Forty-seven nineteen Lightning Drive, I represent the utility maintenance department for the city, a local forty-nine, we just wanted to take a minute to thank the city administration, mayor, and the majority of the city council for recognizing the value of maintaining current staff and recruiting quality candidates through for current open positions. The incentives approved at the last council meeting will hopefully increase our applicant pool to fill the void created when a seventeen-year employee left for a different position with state in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got, is this the appropriate time to talk about the Union Cemetery rezoning?
No, that is going to be shortly under ordinance to twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. There will be public input on that one also. Is there any more general public input for items not on the agenda? Last opportunity for general public input, if you wish to speak to anything, please start with your name and address. Close the public hearing, uh public input and move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the approval or correction of the October second, twenty twenty-three city council continuation minutes and accounts payable, general city warrants from October first through October fifteenth of this year in the amount of two million two hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelli, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Geisler, roll call please.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelli.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi, next is ordinances, ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero nine, an ordinance amending Title II of the Herman Town City Code by amending the official zoning map of the northern six point four acres of parcels three nine five dash zero zero one zero dash zero seven eight two and three nine five dash zero zero one zero dash zero seven eight four. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder. Mr. Johnson?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh as you mentioned, this is a uh proposed property rezoning from P Public to R Three Residential. This is a property at three eight zero seven Getchell Road, it's Union Cemetery. Uh the parcel or the cemetery is currently consists of two parcels right now that run essentially uh north-south. Uh what is proposed is the northern six point four acres of these parcels uh will be reconfigured into essentially more of a a north-south now um lots with the northern portion being rezoned to R Three from that P Public. Uh Union Cemetery has indicated that um they do not see the need or use of this land in the future, particularly with the um increase the last number of years with uh cremations. So what they're hoping to do is have this property rezoned to an R Three residential, and at that point be able to market the property for potential sale to a future developer at that time. Uh all the properties adjacent to the cemetery are zoned R Three, so this would be in keeping with the surroundings as they are today.
Thank you, do we have any questions or comments from council?
Uh just one, uh Eric, can you remind uh myself and maybe others, the uh we've got two other similar requests in the past couple of years, correct?
Yes, that is correct, uh the most recent one was Bethany Cemetery. That is uh just a little bit to the s- uh south and west of this. Uh in that case, it was the exact same thing, uh cemetery had excess land. Uh that property was uh rezoned to R Three, and uh eight lots after the fact were then created from a residential standpoint. The other one being up at Sunrise Cemetery, uh there's a large portion of land in their western portion uh that the owner of the cemetery approached the city for having two one-acre parcels rezoned in that case to commercial. And uh there's been some interest, uh some in development of those particular parcels right there.
Thank you.
You know, anyone else?
What can be done with that land as it's currently zoned?
What can be done with that land as it's currently zoned beside the cemetery?
It's currently zoned. There's really only about five or six stepy uses with that. Um, right now, obviously, one is not residential. Uh, basically, other government type of buildings that way, uh, things such as golf courses, uh, natures, things of that nature, uh, parkland, et cetera.
Library, hospital. And, um, what can be put in the R three?
In the R three, it's primarily guided for single-family residential and any accessory uses, i.e., um, accessory buildings that way. Uh, you could have a school, you could have a, a hospital associated with something like that in an R three. So that's primarily the use of the R three is, is residential development.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Now we will open it up for public input if anyone wishes to comment on this. If you're in chambers, approach the podium and start with your name and address. If you're online, start with your name and address. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Greg Zimmerman, thirty-eight fifty-five Getchell Road. I don't, can I ask a question first? I don't know. Did you say the lots are going to run north-south on that property?
The proposed split would, uh, I take that back. There'd be a dividing line running east-west, so there'll be a north portion and there will be a south portion. The south portion will contain the cemetery as it is. The northern six point four acres is what would be if a develop or redevelopment, excuse me, rezoning goes forward. That would be the land that would be put up for sale.
Yeah. Thank you. So I just wanna, I don't know, it's kind of interesting that, uh, tonight that, uh, there is a group ahead of us talking about, uh, assessments. And it was interesting to learn that, um, city now only charges nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for pretty much any project going on. Cause about, it's probably been about thirteen years ago, there's probably about thirteen, I think it was thirteen residents of us, uh, paid. Uh, we were assessed twenty-six thousand dollars to, um, redo our road, run, redo the road, run sewer, water up there, um, which I personally am still paying on that. But yet the cemetery didn't have to pay anything for that project. The burden was all put on, that probably increased our share of that, but it was a very hefty assessment, uh, for today and even for that time especially. So I don't know that it's right that, uh, cemetery should be able to profit by this and there are some indications that there's going to be more than a single-family, uh, residents in there. But I think to maintain the, the integrity of the neighborhood and, and especially since, um, because the residents there are living there now, mostly that, uh, paid for that to improve that property, to make it profitable for somebody else to come in there and, and develop, um, just doesn't really sit right. It also looks to me like that property is already flagged for something more than single-family homes in there, so. Probably the, I'm sure there's going to be more discussion on this in the near future, but, uh, I think some consideration should be made to the residents for making the improvement on that pro, on that road. One way to do that in a really simple way would be to not approve the rezoning. So. Uh, so I got, thank you.
Thank you. We can't speak to the specifics of your questions about the previous assessments and what they were for and how the project was assessed. We don't have that information in front of us at this time, but we can have staff get back to you on some of those specific questions if you'd like. Uh, you did say that the previous assessment was for roads, sewer, and water. And a twenty thousand dollar assessment is something that's typical when sewer is put in. So, uh, my own assessment was twenty-two thousand just for sewer, no water, no road. But, um, we can answer those specific questions for you on the methodology that was used when that project was done. Uh, we'd be more than willing to do that. Um, is there anyone else in the chambers that wishes to speak to us at this time? Please start with your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. William Hahn, thirty-eight forty Getchell Road. Uh, we in, we own the house, uh, right across the street, the pretty little pond that's on the property. Uh, Greg has some really good concerns for the overall community. I'm going to be a little bit more selfish. Uh, after several procedural snafus, we're finally here, round number three, we get a, a chance to speak our piece. I appreciate the clandestine education that several people gave us on when we should be providing comments. So I guess here it goes. I'm concerned that if the land across the street from my house, which is a wetland, is developed, it is wet, you know, you go whether it's a marsh, there's a swamp, and I'd like to see the wetland assessment either way. I know the one was done. It was referenced in some of the city paperwork, but, uh, when that land's developed, additional drainage or some, something's going to have to be done in order to get that marshland into a more, uh, suitable condition for, for property, at least, uh, that's what I assume is going to happen. And what's going to happen when that water is drained out is my property, the water table, I can, I feel it's going to drop. And it's going to make my pond go away. And we have a lot of, uh, wildlife that live in our pond. Turtles, fish, ducks. We had a duck out there earlier today. Couple muskrats and some other, some other, uh, wildlife that we kind of enjoy. That's why we bought the house was for the rural, get out of the city, uh, the, where we can raise our kids out in the country. Uh, that's what I appreciate about the property. I'd hate to see it turn into the next strip mall or a hospital complex or whatever else, uh, real, RE/MAX wants to do with it. I have no idea, but, uh, I would like to preserve the integrity of the property if we can. And then again, if we could see that, uh, wetland assessment, uh, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Perfect.
Well, my name is Nancy Dever. I live at thirty-eight sixty-eight Getchell Road. Um, I am downstream, if you would, from down, literally down to hill, the bottom of the hill where the development is going on. And even though it won't directly impact my, where I live, it's going to impact the whole area and that includes my wetlands, my area that I've been very careful to, um, bring back with native plants and, um, pollinator gardens, things that would mitigate the, the, um, ditches overflowing. I've solved that problem in one year with the right plants. And I know because I walk past that area every day, I have three major concerns. The first is that there is a wetland there right in front of, um, Bill's house and to the, the house to the south. And in the time I've lived there, it has overflowed in the kinds of winters and springs we had, but it always receded because there was, um, the, the correct grass and, you know, reeds and, um, cattails growing there to keep it from, it would go over this, it would go over the road. Well, when you start developing thing, water doesn't go up, it squishes down. Where's that water going to end up? Where is it going to be mitigated for, so that it won't, um, not just cause problems with the road, but cause problems with people's basements who live in the area, the pond across the road from it and the people who live there. Um, they all have to, you know, think twice about water problems showing up. So that's one thing because, and that water's going to come downhill to where I live eventually. Fortunately, I don't have a basement to worry about, but it will impact, any development will impact the water flow, the invisible water flow. I have a hydrology background that we don't always see. The flow of water goes, recedes and depending on what's built, what's growing there and how the land is treated. The second thing I'm really concerned about, let me get back to finish the other one. That again, it, the area holds wildlife, a lot of deer hang out in there. There, because of the wetland, there's a lot of, um, it's a frog nursery in the spring. I mean, literally, it's a great place to go up and see a lot of frog, baby frogs hanging out. Um, so that is the, um, nat, the, when you caught, talk about natural, natural resources, that's my first concern. My second concern is the amount of traffic that this road, even if it's just a few houses built there, it's going to be pretty, it's a very narrow road. If you've, and most of you know Getchell Road. There's not a much, not much room to jump into a ditch to avoid a car. I mean, they're literally, I love to walk my dogs there. I see people from coming way south of us and north of us walking Getchell, because it is, it's still a pretty quiet road. They're not walking on Stevner. And I wonder what's going to happen to that when all the large trucks and, um, extra, um, cars will be bringing, you know, doing the work. And then even depending on how many places are built there, it's, um, pretty much known in, um, when you're, if you know anything about urban and rural, um, roadways and things like that. The, for every house, new house built, it puts up to four car, four cars, uh, new cars, new vehicles up and down. Because most people have two cars, they might have the babysitter coming in, they might have a cleaning lady, they might have, you know, but it's an average of four cars joining that, you know, little, little patch of road we have. And that really concerns me because so far it's a pretty safe place for me to enjoy walking, because there are no, as you know, we know, we don't have sidewalks there. So that really concerns me. And also I've seen a lot of damage on the road. The middle of it, where the yellow line is, is split now, is splitting now. And I know a lot of that is freezing and snow pack and everything like that, but I can only imagine the, the trucks and, um, the big trucks and excavator, um, trucks and that have been going up and down Getchell Road for the, um, growing, um, development on Anderson Road to the east. They come there, they use our road to get through quick. And so I've seen a lot of road deterioration and I can't even, I don't dare go out on that road when they're going up and down and they don't slow down. By the way, if somebody could tell me how to get a thirty mile an hour, um, on that road, I would, I'd be really happy because there's no sign that tells anybody how fast they can go on that road. I'm, I've, it's up farther north, but in our area, it's, it's kind of become, um, sort of a, you know, raceway. And even for the trucks and they, that I, and that's just road, that's just development around the corner, not right on the road. I can, I just don't even want to think about the noise and the de- degradation of the road itself during, um, a large development. Um, so those are the two more, most important things I'm really concerned about. And they go together and it's not just nature, it's culture, it's our, um, quiet little road suddenly turning not so quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council? If so, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Carissa Hahn and I'm at thirty-eight forty Getchell Road. And, um, when we came to the zoning commission meeting in October, we, uh, requested reports on any kind of, um, evaluation of the property across the street because we're concerned about those trees coming out and where the water's going to go. We haven't, we don't know how to get access to those reports when they are done. And, um, what would be our next step? It seems to us that the decision has probably been made that it's going to be approved. So we want to know what our next step is to, um, identify like, uh, what kind of development may go across the street. So, thanks.
We'll, we'll go over that question when the public input is done. Is there anyone else either in chambers or online that wishes to speak to the council?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jonathan Thornton and I live at fifty-eight sixty-nine Hermontown Road. I am here to represent the Union Cemetery Association. Uh, and I'm representing them currently as the, as a seller's representative for this property. And I just wanted to, to make you aware that, uh, uh, at this point, um, there has been no conversations with any been, anyone other than single-family residential builders. That's, those are the only conversations we've had. Now, as you know, with R three zoning, that can change. You know, once it gets changed to R three, the buyer is chosen and the buyer can do what, what fits within the R three zoning. Uh, but as of today, I have not had any conversations with anybody other than single-family home builders. Uh, the other thing I wanted to make sure that you are aware of is that this is being sold by a cemetery association. And the cemetery association, uh, there's no individual in, within this board that is going to financially gain from this decision and from the sale of this property. Uh, the funds that are going to come into the board and they will be dispersing those funds to maintain the cemetery on ongoing basis. They're figuring for potentially ten to twenty years into the future based on these proceeds from the sale. But in no way are they going to be taking this money and going to Tahiti, okay? So, um, th- this is what I've been told by the board is that it's here, the money will be here to maintain the cemetery. My understanding is, is that, uh, if they do run out of funds at some point in time in the future, that this now reverts back to the county or the city. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but that burden would then be back on some type of a governmental agency if in fact that cemetery went defunct. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Uh, we, we've had lots of conversations with Eric. Uh, we've had conversations with other city staff. Uh, we've done our homework, we've done the things in the proper way. Uh, we've actually done the wetland delineation that was, I don't think even required at this point. Um, but all of that information has been made available to the city. And, and I just, you know, with the precedence of, of the other cemeteries in the area that have gone through this process, uh, I would ask you to, uh, accept the rezoning of this to R three. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council? Any questions from counselors? I've got one for Mr. Johnson, uh, if anybody else.
I was just hoping that Mr. Johnson could kind of explain the next steps.
Eric, first of all, is there a wetland delineation that has been done? And, uh, how do things go forward if somebody were going to try and develop this?
Great, thank you. Yes, that is correct. A wetland delineation has been done, uh, within what, past four to six weeks. Uh, this was reviewed and approved by the Hermontown Technical Evaluation Panel. Uh, there is a wetland that essentially, uh, runs from the northern property line to the southern property line in the middle of the property. There's a small wetland spur that goes off towards Getchell Road, but that's at the extreme south edge of this subject six point four acres that we're talking about. Is approximately one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty feet, uh, basically from the uh, bituminous edge of Getchell that runs to that, uh, easterly property, easterly border of this wetland area. So there is upland that exists between Getchell Road and this wetland. So assuming there is a rezoning of this property to R three, um, anybody who would come in, uh, would have to discuss with staff basically what they plan to do with this property. There is the ability to administratively split this property if there's three new lots or less. Uh, if there's anything greater than that, it would require a public process, i.e. either a plat or a PUD. In those instances, an application would be made. The surrounding property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of this property, uh, would be notified. In the case of both a plat and a PUD, a public notice sign is required to be placed on that property as well as, uh, there's, um, uh, notice in the public paper as well for an upcoming meeting. So what happens then is there would be a public hearing at the planning and zoning meeting. Planning and zoning would make a recommendation that would then come forth to the city council for an action at that point. Uh, as Mr. Thornton had said, that there's been some interested parties in this, but to date, no one has done any further than asking questions.
Are the results of the wetland delineation available to the public if they stopped here?
Uh, they can look at it if they want a physical copy of the delineation report, a public data request to be made.
Okay, but they could view it at city offices?
That is correct. They can look at it over the county.
And they could take notes?
That is correct.
Take their phone out and photograph it if they'd like. Okay. Uh, so that information is available?
Yes, it is.
Is that, is that delineation placed on our maps on our website yet?
That is something that we're working towards through the GIS process. But right now, I always inform people on the, both the county and the on the, both the county and the cities, we have what's called National Wetland Inventory. I always tell people that's a guide. And to tell that has actually been grown truth, like for instance, this one has, that that's always a guide.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I just want to reassure myself. So if it's three lots or less, there's no public process?
That's correct. We can administratively split the property.
You could take that six point four acres and divide it into three lots and essence have two acre lots.
That is correct, yes.
But if they want to put in more than that, then it's the public process.
It triggers the public process, yes.
If they go, if say they split it into three lots and they wanted a building permit, they still have to deal with the wetlands?
If there, if there are any impacts, yes, they would. If they stay out of those wetland areas, then there's no further action. It's an approved delineation that's good for five years.
I have a question on the procedural part of, and I don't know if you can speak to this, but the assessment from the cemetery prior that the gentleman had spoke about. What procedurally, why would that, that the cemetery not have been assessed?
I can answer that. Is, I was not here at this, at this time, but I'm I'm guessing, like I said, and I'm simply guessing at this point, is that it was not assessed for sewer and water, because there's no sewer and water connections to the cemetery. So typically, you can't assess the property if it's not getting any benefit. There'd be no benefit for them to have sewer and water, but they wouldn't have been assessed.
They would have been assessed for the road, though.
I, I could say, I, I don't know what was all involved in that. Typically, those assessments were not separated by road, water and sewer. It was just one. So when we do project four forty-two, people who lived on that got sewer and wa- and a road, and we didn't break it out between one or the other.
And I, I'm trying to have a little bit of a recollection of the sewer process in that area. I seem to remember the first two homes from Hermanton Road already had been connected to the Hermanton Road when the sewer was put in further. And I'm not sure the exact nuances of where it was put in, but the construction documents would have to be reviewed to answer any specific questions on that.
Okay, so a follow-up to that, has there been a cemetery where that the deferred maintenance or any type of operating maintenance comes back to the city?
Not yet.
So this is one of those circumstances where, to speak to the gentleman's point, if this gets put back on the tax base, this becomes an issue that the city has to deal with for ongoing maintenance. Is that correct?
Could. It, it's not clear yet. We'd have to have our attorney research that also.
That's not that simple, that's, the mayor's absolutely right. That's not that simple of an answer. You'd have to look at all of the, the conditions of that. And so it's like, that's not.
And it may not even be the city. It could be the county. We have the same type of questions when trailer parks are closed down. And what, what's done with them as far as placing the people in new homes and things, so. There, it, it's a complicated answer.
And so if this being, if we approve this, which was unanimously recommended by planning and zoning, if there is a larger development that is planned, the public will have input on that part as well. Right now, we're just changing the zoning requirements.
Anything greater than a three-lot split?
Is this area in the Tiff district that we redrew?
I don't believe it is.
It is in the, within the development agreement, but not the Tiff district.
So it's Tiff eligible?
They'd have to apply for Tiff, yes.
What? I'm trying to think of how to phrase this. I think I've made my opinion on PUDs and apartment buildings very known. What ability does the council have to direct how this property is developed in the future, if any?
Zoning.
Zoning. But if at R three, it's, it's already approved for multifamily dwelling?
No.
Twin homes, stone homes.
No, you can, you, you can have a twin home with a special use permit.
Okay. But it's not, like, they couldn't, nobody could buy that and build an apartment building on it.
If they did, they'd have to try to, they'd have to go through the planned unit development process.
Most likely scenario is single-family homes, then?
Hopefully. Any other questions from council?
My only other comment was to tag on to what Mr. Thornton said, is that cemetery is in need of some repairs. If you look at their fence and those brick pillars that support the fence, they're falling there. I think they're doing the best they can with limited resources, so I'm, I'm thinking that they don't have a lot of cash and this might help them hopefully continue to maintain it for the next however many years, but that was, to me, that was good information to know about the information that you shared with us.
Also knowing that not one individual is profiting or benefiting from this. I think that was important to know.
And something else that maybe staff could look into if this is approved is, did we place availability fees on the property for sewer? And water? That's something that happens quite often when assessments are deferred.
Specifically to that, Mayor, is that we'd, we'd want to look at whether or not an availability was created. If availability was not created, the city has a policy that says individual sewer connections after the fact is a five thousand dollar availability fee. So if, again, I don't know if there's existing availability fees on this parcel. But if there were not, if they went to build three homes, each home would have to pay five thousand dollars to have access to the sewer.
Do twin homes have to pay ten?
But typically, that's how we've done it.
Good connection.
And, and they make the distinction, we, we have this distinction all the time. A twin home being two separate homes, each with its own connection, would each pay five thousand.
Yeah.
A duplex, which only has one connection, would pay five thousand.
They would need a, they would need us to vote on a duplex, though, right? Isn't that how, kind of what we just did on? We just voted on that.
Twin home is a special use.
Exactly. We kind of use the all-encompassing term two-family home. That covers both duplexes and twin homes that way, and that is a special use.
Maybe it was the septic issue that we voted on. A variance for the septic, I think, is what it was.
Anything else from council? We're at the point where we need a roll call.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, we move to resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-six. Resolution joining statewide volunteer firefighter pension coverage for the Hermanton Fire Department effective as of January first, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
So approving this resolution would allow our new unpaid, our paid on-call employees to be covered with the same pension benefit that our current volunteers do. So we want to provide that benefit to our new unpaid, on-call paid volunteer firefighters. So that's what we're recommending.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, start with your name and address. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-six? Or any public input on the resolution joining the statewide volunteer firefighter pension? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-seven. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the fire services transition agreement between the Hermanton Volunteer Fire Department and the City of Hermanton. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
This is simply an agreement between the Hermanton Volunteer Fire Department and the city to just, how are we going to figure out exactly how we transition from the volunteer department to the city department? Including, you know, how we transfer assets, liabilities, how we're covering insurance, how we're covering the vehicles, things like that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the resolution for the fire services transition agreement? Do you have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-seven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-eight. Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contract to North Star Insulating Systems Incorporated for the labor and materials needed to insulate the attic of the administration in the amount of not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
As you know, we've been talking about the issue of ice jams that appear on the, this building for the last, you know, nine months, in terms of how we might try to fix that. We have a new roof and we want to make sure that we protect that investment. So we, last month, we approved the contractor and put in heat tape to reduce the amount of ice that accumulates. We believe that this insulation will also help reduce the heat loss and then also the accumulation of ice as well. So this is our, the recommendation is to have this insulation installed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
My only comment, and I should have asked earlier, but with the building official leaving and looking for a new building official, will Bron have some inspections or observations to kind of keep things on task?
Yes, we're going to have Bron involved. We've also have Holberg Engineering, because they did some of the electrical stuff, so they'll be on site. And we've also been kind of having Greg, the maintenance person, be involved in some of the pre-construction meetings.
Okay.
Before Adam leaves, we're going to try to have a pre-construction meeting with the insulation company.
Is there a county or a state inspector that could pick up the slack?
We're going to have Jim Reg for a while.
Yeah, we, we'll, we've got, we'll have a contract with Jim Reg for that interim period.
Good, thank you.
Good to have the insulation inspected this time around, so we don't have the same problem.
Any other comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the decision to spend an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to North Star Insulating Systems? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-nine. Resolution approving change orders number fifteen through sixteen for road improvement district number five thirty-four, Uggstead and Arrowhead Roads. Is there a motion?
Motion to.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should we have our city engineer explain this?
Sure, that'd be great.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So these two change orders are work associated with our road reconstruction of Uggstead Road. The first one is we had some various hydrants and valves that needed to be adjusted that were, were not part of the initial plan. And change order sixteen is for work along this storm sewer, there was a, excuse, excuse me. There's a conflict with the Lumen slash Century Link line and there was some extra work that had to be done to work around that utility. So those are the, the two small change orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one forty-nine? Is there any public input on the approval of change orders number fifteen and sixteen from Road Improvement Project number five thirty-four? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one fifty, resolution approving pay request number five for Road Improvement District number five thirty-four to Yulin Brothers Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred five dollars and forty-nine cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones? Any explanation needed on this, Mr. Mulder?
Just the next pay up.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the approval of pay request number five for Road Improvement District number five thirty-four? Any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one fifty? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one fifty-one, resolution receiving bids and awarding contract to Northern Interstate Construction Incorporated for two thousand twenty-three sewer, sewer improvement district number five forty-four. Stebner Park Improvement District Sewer Water and Road in the amount of three hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
Maybe David Wolf can explain this process.
So Mayor and Council, this is our bid for the utilities on Stebner Park Drive. That's the, the roadway into Stebner Park. This consists of water and sewer to serve the southern part of the park where lots or fields four and five are. And so we're, we're bringing the water to the water and sewer will both be on the east side of the road in the green space. We have a couple of crossings of the road and a small piece that crosses the, the parking lot. So we had, I believe, seven bids at our bid opening. And the, the bid results are, are part of the packet here, and the low bidder was Northern Interstate. And we reviewed the bids and they all checked out, so it's my recommendation that we award this to Northern Interstate Construction.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Maybe just to add for public understanding is that this is just the utility pipe and the roadwork would be done through a separate project next year.
Correct.
Should the road be taken out of this resolution?
The road, the road mentioning in the, is for the improvement district as a whole.
Okay.
It's only partial work for the whole project.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one fifty-one? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution in front of the council. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one fifty-two, resol- resolution approving pay request number four for Road Improvement District number five thirty-eight to Yulin Brothers Incorporated in the amount of six hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones? Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Wolf?
Sure, or it's just another, it's just the next pay up in this project.
Okay, and this is the
This is the Hermantown Marketplace.
Richard Lindgren.
Richard Lindgren project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution approving pay request number four for road improvement district number five thirty eight? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty three dash one fifty two? Roll call please.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye, and last, we have a motion to go into closed session, a motion to close the meeting. Of the Hermantown City Council pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three V to develop and consider. An offer or counter offer for the sale of real property for economic development, do we have a motion?
Move to close.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. At the end of the closed session, we will return to open session. Where we will then recess probably till the twenty fourth at a time to be determined.